Yeah. Had you checked. Oh, that hit. Yeah. That hit.
And then they did a remake of it, which was even scary.
I think the old one was better.
They remade that one and it was scary.
Jay in the coming, she went for it.
The elder, I mean, she made it in the house. She had an inside little pond.
This is just the beginning.
It was really pretty.
The first one, you know, had been.
The first one was very good.
He's calling, um.
Congratulations, your anything's won.
I don't remember. Come on, everyone. Did they talk today? Okay, make a list. Come on. Give me the list. Give me the list.
I'm doing.
Are we ready to get going in one minute?
Pardon, Mayor?
Are we ready to get going in one minute? Can you hear me okay?
We're ready to go at six thirty.
All right, we'll give another. Is everybody at the dais?
How's the weather, Jay?
It's a little drizzly today, which is kind of nice.
Drizzle's good.
Yeah.
He doesn't wear a hat.
So does the light go on in Fountain because Jay's out of town?
Pastor Steve in the audience?
Yes, he is.
All right, excellent. All right. All ready? Please, uh, all meeting board, regular session of Fountain Hill Town Council, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
All right, pledge of allegiance is sealed by the United States of America and the future of our elected citizens. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing. Pastor Steve Ferguson from Shepherd Hills. Those are in church, welcome for our invitation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we give you thanks for this beautiful community we are privileged to live in. As we look around us, we are in awe of what a marvelous Creator you are. We also this evening give thanks from the men and women who serve as our town council. During these difficult economic times, leadership decisions are even more difficult to make. So we pray this evening that you grant them wisdom and understanding and compassion for those they serve. And as we welcome back our winter residents, continue to create within our community that spirit of welcome that we have, may I ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Steve. Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Schlum?
Here.
Councilmember Cantino?
Here.
Councilmember Legay?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Ashambo?
Here.
And Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Thanks, Beth. All right. First, obviously, I'm not there presently. I am in California attending the Urban Land Institute Conference. Thanks to a scholarship from the Urban Land Institute, I'm able to attend here. And the Urban Land Institute Conference is full of about 6,000 developers, architects, land planners, and the development community, residential, commercial, and otherwise. So I'm really pleased to be here in San Francisco and appreciate the scholarship. Give a brief update here over the last couple of days of toured reuse and repositioned properties, commercial in nature, of toured new mixed use and main street developments, some of which might resemble what were our vision plan. I'm continuing to attend some sessions and training on, we've gone over the global economic outlooks, development market trends, public-private partnerships have been a big focus in this conference as well as best practices in land use and the economy's factors on development, timing and such. And of course, there's networking, meeting a lot of developers from around the country and actually around the world. So I'm pleased to be here. Unfortunately, can't be there, but the weather in Fountain Hills is much better. It's drizzly and about 58 here in San Francisco. Um, I'd like to mention a couple of community happenings. Coming right up on Saturday, we start with our Desert Botanical Garden rededication and reopening there along Fountain Hills Boulevard near King Street at 9:00 a.m. You can come and join us as we reopen the Desert Botanical Garden, thanks to the efforts of all the volunteers and then the towns providing the parking lot there. So join us this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. And right after that, we've got a ribbon putting for the docent-led art walk that is just getting started, November 7th, again, this Saturday at 9:45 in the courtyard between the community center and the library. We'll start touring now with the thanks of the Fountain Hills Cultural Association, Chamber of Commerce in the town, and the many volunteers that are making it all possible. Start having tours of the awesome public art that so many generous givers have made available to our community. Also, Saturday, busy day, busy night, 7 o'clock, 3:00 a.m. state football tournament begins. The number one seeded Fountain Hills High School Football Falcons host the number 16 seeded Window Rock in the beginning of the state football tournament. So an exciting game, I'm sure, coming up Saturday. And then Monday, the 9th, have our next old-fashioned Town Hall meeting at 7 o'clock at the Town Hall Chambers. And Vice Mayor Hanson and Councilmember Dickey will be joining me there. And our office at this Town Hall will be public works and planning and zoning. Of course, there are only two council members that I can attend so that we ensure we do not break any open meeting laws as we wish to discuss whatever is on your mind as the public, and you're all invited. Hope you'll come forward, take the opportunity to share your comments, questions, or concerns in this open environment, again, Monday at 7 o'clock. As I mentioned, these elbow seasons between winter and summer, spring and fall, they are busy. Veterans Day service at the memorial, a beautiful Fountain Hills Veterans Memorial. Of course, on Veterans Day, believe it that 9:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial. And then just following that, on the same day, an 85-foot blue spruce from the Apache Sitgraves National Forest will be this year's U.S. Capitol Christmas tree. Yes, a Christmas tree from Arizona, and the first stop in the valley is here in Fountain Hills, at the Target Center on Shea Boulevard. Again, that's November 11th, and that one's at 10:00 a.m. So some exciting things. Of course, we've got our Fountain Festival of Arts and Crafts coming up in the chamber on November 13th through the 15th along the avenue. And I'll mention some more things at our next meeting. But thanks for that opportunity to invite people and make sure be aware of the awesome small-town activities we have here in our wonderful community. Next up, we have scheduled public appearance from Samantha Kaufman on the town's 20 years of the town celebration plans. Welcome, Samantha.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Let me get my presentation pulled up here. Brian and I are here this evening to talk to you about the upcoming incorporation celebration. We are co-chairing the committee that is planning this event. The event is going to be taking place at the community center on Saturday, December the 5th, and the events start at 3:00 o'clock. We'll have a public reception, we'll have a ceremonial cake cutting, and coffee, followed by the program that is from 4:00 to 5:30. And then we're hoping that everybody will exit at 5:30 and head right down to Stroll in the Glow.
We're kind of tag-teaming tonight's presentation. We put together a little municipal memories thing, and we're not exactly sure all the facts are 100% correct, but we're 99% sure. So just in the past 20 years, six mayors, 38 council members, we've grown to six municipal departments and also fire and law enforcement. We've acquired and developed four town parks, built the new Town Hall, the community center, and the library-museum complex. And I believe this one's, according to Tom Ward, 69.89 miles of roads constructed since incorporation, both private and public. So, and then we've also taken on such things as senior services, home-delivered meals, and other social services programs. The committee members, Sam mentioned that her and I are co-chairing, but we're also working with other where, Captain Kleinhein, Shawna Williams, Paula Woodward, Raymond Reese, Katie Decker, Larry Bratcher, Todd Brunin, and Cassie Hansen has actually been very instrumental in helping us put together the program for that day. So thank you to Cassie and everyone else.
The schedule of events that we've got going on that day, we've got Rural Metro has generously donated hot dogs for the event. They're going to bring their big grill out and grill up the hot dogs for everybody. They'll also have their fire truck on display out in the center parking lot there. MCSO is going to be providing all the beverages, and they will also be displaying some vehicles out there as well for the kids. The River of Time Museum is going to be open, and Judy has found a fry bread vendor to come out and serve fry bread in front of the entrance to the library and museum area. We are going to have a photograph of all of the former council members that will be taken, and there'll be a dedication to keep McMahon, the new plaque that's in front of the museum over there, we're going to dedicate that day. And we'll also have the school kids that will be coming out to sing during the event. Each mayor will be given the opportunity to speak about their terms in office, and the mayor will be revealing the contents of the time capsule. Some of the media that we've done for this event include, Katie's put together, or putting together, a special municipal services brochure, we're working on that now. We've had three press releases go out, and we've had articles in the Avenue's publication that will be coming out. We've got the essay on the front page of the website, Twitter, Channel 11. We're taking event flyers to all the schools, local businesses, and we will, we're supposed to have a 4:30 news blast, but I didn't see it go out today. It'll also be in tomorrow's. It was there? Okay.
Debate wasn't quite right.
Oh, okay. We'll work on that. We've got an essay that we're asking the public to participate in, and it is, again, it's on the front page of the website. We're asking people to share their thoughts on the future of the Fountain Hills area and any memories they might have to share. The Fountain Hills Times has agreed to run a special edition in the paper, 20 Years of the Town, so that's exciting. And we're going to have a special feature article in the Arizona League of Cities and Towns premiere edition.
Samantha mentioned the time capsule, and in January of 91, Mayor John Cotillo and residents buried the time capsule in Fountain Park near the flagpole, not nearly as deep as we thought it was going to be when we tried to find it, in a moment. But the items from the time capsule were commemorating the first 20 years from 1970 to 1990, when the town first started building houses and things like that back in the 70s. So the contents are in there to be revealed. And you can see the unearthing back on September 28th down at Fountain Park. We brought out the big backhoe, but probably only needed some shovels, so wasn't surprised we hadn't hit it more times over the years. So right now, it's on display. This is River of Time Museum, but it's actually over at the community center, you can see there. It's out in the front lobby, so go by, take a look. It's covered in dirt and wrapped up so we keep things clean, but looking forward to seeing everything that's in there from almost 20 years ago. So that will be a very exciting part of the event on December 5th.
Excellent.
Other events that we have taking place that day, we've got several events. It's going to be a very busy day here in Fountain Hills. We've got the guided hike through McDowell Mountain Preservation. We've got the art walks, the Kiwanis Breakfast with Santa, the holiday celebration at the community center, which is an annual event. We've got the River of Time Museum is open again, and the Chamber of Commerce, Stroll in the Glow. And that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Mayor, I know you've been working a lot on this as well. Anything more you want to add?
No, thank you. Go, yes, go online, fill in the survey, please do that. Hundred words or less. Hundred words or less, and it's either a memory or your vision of the future, or it's going to be really fun because we just want to accumulate as many quotes as possible. So hit the website. It's in order.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thanks, Brian, very much. Any other questions from the council? If you do, just say something, so, because I'm not going to be able to see your hand. Thank you very much.
No questions.
Next. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Henry. We'll move on to next public appearance presentation, which is a presentation of the quarterly budget report for the period July 109 through September 3009 by our deputy town manager, Julie Getty.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's fiscal update is a report for the first quarter of the current fiscal year, which began on July 1st, 2009. With only three months of data, it's too early to predict how revenues for the rest of the fiscal year will come in, but we will continue to proceed cautiously with any This chart is a summary of all town fund revenues. The percent of budget is an indicator of where revenues should be as of the end of September, and they should be close to 100%. The general fund, which is the town's main operating fund, is at 84% of where it should be if revenues were evenly distributed. As we know, revenues are slower to come in during the season when the snowbirds aren't here, and our busy season is November, December, January, February, and March. However, with the return of the winter visitors, it's hoped that revenues will catch up to 100% of where they should be. The HERF, or the street operating funds, are also lagging, and this revenue source is dependent upon gasoline sales in Maricopa County. The capital improvement of the CIP budget includes stimulus funding, which although awarded, has not yet been received. So you can see we're only at 7%, but that's because we've not received the funds yet. This next chart shows all expenditures for all town funds. The general fund shows 92% for the quarter, which is ahead of revenues. However, there were expenditures in the first quarter that covered six months or more. For example, our liability insurance was paid in August and is paid up through December for six months. So as the revenues lag, so should the expenditures. This is a chart of just the general fund and shows last fiscal year, this fiscal year actual, and this fiscal year budgeted revenues. The dark green column on the left is last fiscal year. The middle column is the actual for this year, and the dark blue column on the right is the budget. The local sales tax is lagging, but reflects sales for the months of June, July, and August. The general fund provides revenues to support general operations of the town. These revenues include sales tax, intergovernmental revenues, or state shared revenues, license fees, permits, and program fees. General fund dollars received in the first quarter is $3.1 million, broken down by 47% coming from the state through income, sales, and vehicle license taxes. 44% comes from our local sales tax. The remainder, or 9%, is from our license fees, permits, and program fees. Revenues from the general fund portion of the local sales tax, the 2.2%, are $1.7 million. This chart breaks down the collections by category, with retail lower than anticipated at $710,000, and it was budgeted at $810,000. So our local sales tax for the first quarter is lagging by about $100,000. Again, once the winter visitors return, we expect to make that up. Our transportation, communication utilities is also lower than anticipated. It's at $375,000, and it was budgeted at $475,000. The construction sales tax, which is transferred out of the general fund and into the capital projects fund, is significantly lower than last year, but higher than budgeted. With very little building activity, this category is expected to continue to decline. The economy appears to be showing signs of a recovery, so we are hoping that the next quarter will be more in line with what we projected. You can see from this chart that sales tax from construction activity, of which the 85% is transferred to the capital projects fund, declined 50% from last year. Compared to last year, our retail has dropped about 10% from last year. General fund expenditures of $3.3 million are 9% less than the first quarter budget of $3.6 million, and includes some upfront costs made at the beginning of the year, as we discussed earlier. Police and fire, public safety account for 43% of the total general fund revenues, or expenditures, sorry. The administrative divisions include finance, human resources, town manager, economic development, information technology, media relations, town clerk, and operational support, and that accounts for 21% of the general fund. Park maintenance and recreation programs are 13% of the general fund. Public works includes engineering facilities and is at 9% of the total. The remainder includes planning and zoning, the community center and senior center, as well as the council and the court. Last year, the town purchased a new financial software that provided a lot more flexibility in reporting activities. We also implemented a new type of budget reporting called program budgets. With program budgeting, we can show expenditures in a multitude of ways. We can show it as a traditional line item, which is what we see here. It's difficult to read, but I just wanted to give an example of what this report looks like. This is traditional line item, what we're used to seeing, wages, utilities, things like that. And you can see the year-to-date expended is $3.3 million. This slide and the next two slides are samples from the software showing general fund expenditures by all three categories. The encumbrance column, which is something new we didn't have before, those are commitments to spend funds, so these funds are not available. They're not spent, but they are committed. For example, we have a contract with Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. That's now reflected in this budget. So what that means is then we take what we have committed to spend, and the rest is what is available. This is a chart, I know nobody can read it, but what I wanted to show here, these are the number of programs that we have. And again, the total expenditures are the same number, the $3.3 million. But all of these are the programs that we have budgeted for and set up. So we can account for things by line items, like we said, or if we want to know, how much do we spend on home-delivered meals? Or how much do we spend on plan review? We can now get that data and pull it out and provide that information. The goal is to put this information on our website, to make it accessible to all residents so they can see exactly where their dollars go. Similarly, this is a budget by division. It shows the town manager, the town clerk, finance, engineering, parks, and community center. And again, it shows expenditures of $3.3 million. So this report is, or program is very flexible, and we can show it in many different ways. And it's very valuable when we go to evaluate programs. This is that same report for the streets department, and these are two reports on one page. The top one is the traditional line item, and the second one is by programs within the streets department. The past several years, our economy has been driven by construction activity. As that industry has declined, so has town revenues. For example, in fiscal year '06, the town took in $1.7 million in building permit fees. In fiscal year '09, total building permit revenues were $300,000, a decline of 83%. Local sales tax from construction, which funds our capital projects, was $3.6 million in fiscal year '06. In fiscal year '09, that number was less than $1 million. As we prepare for the fiscal year '11 budget, this chart shows some of the challenges that we are going to face over the next few years. We learned this week that the Fountain Hills portion of state shared revenues, the state income tax, for next year is going to be reduced by about $800,000. That is reflected in this chart, as well as our estimate of all our other revenues, and that is the red line that's at the bottom. What is not reflected is the budget adjustments that are going to have to be made to accommodate the reduction in revenues. The Budget Committee has already begun to work on next year's budget. One of the things that we have to consider is that each decision that we make is not a short-term solution, but a five-year solution. We cannot fix this gap with one-time revenues or cuts in staff. We need to resolve it with a strategic solution. As we go through the budgeting process, we will bring to the town council the best solution to solve the long-term sustainability of the town. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Julie. Well, I don't want to thank you for that, but I thank you for delivering us that news. It's necessary for us to hear. It's not good news at all. There's some areas that aren't as bad this, over that period, but we can see in the near future, it's getting pretty grim. So I appreciate you making sure we're always on top of that. I know, being a part of the Budget Committee, we are busy addressing some difficult times ahead of us already. So thank you for bringing that forward. Any questions from council for Julie?
It doesn't appear to be so, unless Councilman Legay.
Mayor, I have a question for Julie.
Yes, thank you.
Julie, actually, I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. With the reduction in our sales tax across the board, both on construction and retail, do you see any concerns regarding our ability to meet our debt? Specifically, our mountain bonds and Town Hall, which is, comes from our sales tax revenue, because it's down. We hope that it begins moving up, but if it continues with the state and national trend, this stuff continues to move down. Do you have any concerns in that regard?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Legay, fortunately, in the short term, we were able to accumulate a surplus in those funds with the sales tax because the economy was doing well. Hopefully, the economy will pick up enough that as we draw down on that surplus, which is what we're doing now, that we will eventually recover enough to cover those payments. So that's a very good question. It's very definitely something that we're looking out for.
Okay. And thank you for that, and I was aware of the surplus, but once again, these comments, questions, these are heads up, these are things that are not in front of us today, but if things continue in the way they continue to move, I'm very concerned. The other thing, too, is that, do you think it's too early for us to start looking at some policy changes? As you well know, and as you mentioned earlier, 85% of our construction revenue is diverted from our general fund and it's used for capital projects. I'd like to just put out, for your consideration, as well as the Budget Committee's consideration, that you think about that policy. Because I would prefer to move monies out of the capital fund, because we have more control over that, into the general fund, rather than having to dip into our general fund reserve and/or our rainy day fund. So that's more of a comment. And then my last question, comment, is, you know, when we did our budget for '09, '10, we did create a rainy day fund, and we had an estimated rainy day fund balance of $1.3 million. Regardless of what occurs, we should have that fund balance at the end of the year. Is that correct, $1.3?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman Legay, yes, you know, the intention is that that fund, the rainy day fund, is only to be used in a real severe economic downturn. And so we're, again, we're planning and preparing now and hoping that that doesn't happen.
Absolutely, and I hope it doesn't happen as well. It's something I'd like the Budget Committee to consider, however, going forward as we start looking at possible restructuring, reorganization, that that rainy day fund of $1.3 is out there. And that would be something we would look at, obviously, before going to a general fund balance. So I just wanted to confirm that. So thank you so much for answering my questions and listening to my comments, and I'll just reinforce what the mayor said, great job. Thanks for staying on top of this, Rick, town manager, the Budget Committees. And I know you folks are looking every day at ways of cutting back, and I encourage you to continue to do the same, whether it's across maintenance, utilities, education, training, supplies, and equipment, all of those things that are discretionary spending. You've done a tremendous job here before, but I still think we need to continue to look at that so we can kind of minimize the pain going forward. Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Legay. Any other questions or comments from council?
Yes, Mayor. I want to thank Julie for coming up with this new software that we passed last year. I think it's going to be great that we turn it around and tell everybody where everything is going instead of having it all lumped up. I think this is mass confusion for the citizens, as well as the council and everybody else. So I want to thank you for that, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cantino. It was a challenge for us this year, working with the old system and the new system. Now, next year, moving into this next year, we'll be able to compare apples to apples a lot more easily with the program budget visually available to us. Thank you, Councilmember Cantino. Any other councilmembers?
Councilwoman Dickey would like to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, just a couple of comments, that we don't operate in a vacuum, that we keep ourselves aware of what goes on around us in the state. Interestingly, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, but the amount that we spend on public safety is pretty similar to our state shared revenue, you know, it's 40%. 40%, maybe a little bit more than that. And some of the discussion that had occurred last year and even the year before, on a state level, had to do with shared revenue and, you know, because these things always do come up for discussion. So, well, should we get out of that whole situation of shared revenue? Should it be just for public safety in each individual municipality? And at the time, I remember seeing that it was fairly close to what we already did spend, so, which is probably $6 million or a little bit more. So I wanted to mention that, to make sure that we keep our eyes and ears open, and that tomorrow, the League Executive Committee is going to be voting on the budget items that do affect municipalities, including the freeze on the development fees, the freeze on our building codes, and a couple other items that are a little more complicated to discuss. But just to be aware of those things, because they do have ramifications on us, and obviously, anything that's 40% of our operating budget, and it gets affected by things that we are not in control of. So look beyond our borders once in a while and advocate for us when you can.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickey. Anyone else?
Mayor, Vice Mayor. Do I have to go through anybody else?
I don't think so.
Okay, great. Oh, Rick, Town Attorney. Just a quick question, should have asked this earlier, but one of the last slides you placed up there was our general fund, you know, the graph that, very scary graph there. You just had it up there.
Scary talk?
Yeah, just refresh my memory. I'm recalling from 2005, 2006, when we first started the Strategic Plan Initiative, and we did the Hawkins Report, and we did long-term projections. I recall, and I was unable to find the graph this afternoon, that this graph wasn't supposed to look like this until about '15. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So this graph was supposed to start having this inversion in 2015, and we're looking at that inversion '10, '11.
Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Leger, you're absolutely correct. When the Strategic Plan was done, we projected this exact scenario, but we projected it to happen in 2015 or 2016. What has happened since then is two things. The one thing is, when we made that projection, we projected that the almond property would start to develop rather quickly. Because as soon as they bought it, we figured, you know, we started assuming that they were going to start building on it, because they had spent a significant amount of money. The second thing that happened was the downturn in the economy, and the severity of it and the length of it. So we're where we thought we were going to be in 2016, but we're there now. So it wasn't a surprise that it came, it's just a surprise that it came this early.
And I simply mention that because that's huge, and I think it's very important for the public to be aware of that. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Councilmember Leger. And we'll be having, as we get our arms wrapped around the significance of the budget situation, it's upon us, we'll be having more discussions in public, so that more and more folks are aware and can have input. As a small town, it's often needed to have input from other organizations and folks to be part of the solution. We're going to need all the help we can get. Any other questions on the budget? Or the quarterly budget report?
It does not appear so, Mayor.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, thank you very much, Julie. Move now to call to the public. Anyone from the public, Beth?
Yes, Mayor, Gail Evans.
Thank you. Come on forward, Ms. Evans, to the podium. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Gail Evans. I live on Palisades Boulevard, and just past Fountain Hills Boulevard, going west towards the high school, and that chain of houses on the right. I have a truck and a fifth wheel, which I have to store elsewhere, because there's no place on my property to put it. Periodically, I go out and I come back, usually business, but because I have a business license in town for senior services, but I go all over the state, bringing supplies to lower-income people and whatever. Anyway, I park my fifth-wheel and truck in front of my house, obviously, to load or unload. The reading, as I understand it, says that you have 48 hours to do this, that you can park in front of your home to load or unload. It also states, which is a contradictory statement, that you cannot park there between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m. in the morning. And I have had, I know every code officer by name, I know all the sheriffs by name, and they all say we have better things to do. However, if they receive a complaint, which they usually do, they show up at my house. I pay my taxes like everyone else. I think that I should receive some sort of an exemption, because it doesn't happen very often. I mean, we're talking maybe once every two to three months, maybe. But when I bring it in, and if I've been out, like, in the desert someplace in these smaller communities, that thing is filthy, so I really do go through it. But however, during the day, I'm working, so I don't have the amount of time to get my things unloaded or loaded for the next trip out. So I am there 48 hours, or less, and it's always been less, but invariably, the sheriff shows up, and, you know, I don't know what to do. Because I am not going to get up at 1:30 in the morning and move it for two hours, and get up at 4 o'clock and bring it back. So I apparently am the only person that seems to have this kind of problem, because there are other, a numerable amount of numbers, of motorhomes and other recreational vehicles. On side streets, there's one guy that is, so far, has been there nine weeks, parked in front of his house, no problem, because he's rebuilding the entire inside. Nobody bothers him. But because I'm on a high-profile street, I get it every time I park in front of my house. So it's a, so far, unresolvable thing to do. I've asked Safeway if I could park it over there even for the night and get it again. That works for a while, but they said, you know, you can't do that all the time. And again, because I am loading and unloading, I work as long as I can into the evening, but then I wait till the next morning again to continue. So I have a problem, and I don't know what to do with it. I'd like to be able to have, this is exempt, and a big sticker on the back of my RV saying, "Leave me alone." I think that's my biggest concern at the moment, because I do come and go. Prior to my RV, I had a utility trailer, because I was doing landscaping in town. But I couldn't do anything about that. That's, I took care of that.
All right, Ms. Evans. I think our time is up. We have a three-minute limit here, but I think this is something that perhaps we can, I can, and calls to the public are things we really can't respond to, but we are pleased that you bring this type of concern forward. I think we could perhaps look over to our town manager and ask Rick to maybe follow up on this issue, to see if there is a way to meet your needs. Seems like you're certainly doing some important work for the communities and those with greater needs than some of us. And I wonder if, does that seem appropriate, Rick?
He's making a note as you speak, Mayor.
Yes.
All right. Ms. Evans, thank you for coming forward. Hopefully, we can address your concern. And may not understand it completely, but I think staff will be able to look into it, and feel free to contact me directly in the future. Anyone else from the public?
Anyone else from the public?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our consent agenda, and request a motion to approve items 1 through 3 as listed.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Ashambo?
Aye.
Mayor 70?
Thank you very much. And move on to our regular agenda. Item number four, consideration of payment in the amount of $6,500 from the 1% Public Art Fund on the Zuvva Gallery for the purchase of a stone sculpture titled "An All-Day Job." Mark? Welcome.
Thank you. I have before you the piece of art that's under consideration this evening. You may recall that this particular piece was brought forward on a loan basis from Zuvva Galleries. It has now been in the park for a number of months, while a fundraising effort was taken place by the Public Art Committee. They were successful in raising a portion of the funds, however, the fundraising effort, given the current climate, has fallen a little bit short, as you can see by the information I provided to you. The good news is that the original price was at $28,000, and the Public Art Committee has been able to renegotiate a price, down from $28,000 down to $15,000. They are requesting that the balance of the funds, $6,500, come from the Public Art Fund, and then I included in there some information about the current balance of $6,752. And has been my practice in the past, I want to emphasize to the audience that these funds are set aside specifically for the purposes of public art, and they are not public funds or tax monies for that specific purpose. They were raised specifically for the support and acquisition of public art. So that is the consideration. Both Jerry Miles and Sandy Thompson are here this evening, in case you have questions of them.
Thank you very much, Mark. Let's first look for a motion to approve the expenditure $6,500 from the 1% Public Art Fund for the purchase of an "All-Day Job" sculpture.
Don't move. Second.
All right, for a second. Anyone from the public, Beth?
Yes, Mayor, Sandy Thompson.
Thank you. Welcome, Sandy. Thank you for coming.
She's bounding across the room.
I'm running. And good evening, council members. I'm Sandy Thompson, Chair of the Public Art Committee, and I'm here to ask you to authorize the issuance of a check in the amount of $6,500, as Mark Mayor has already mentioned, payable to Zuvva Galleries in Scottsdale to complete our fundraising on "An All-Day Job." And I didn't know Mark was going to have a picture up on the wall, so I brought my own. But I'm sure you all know that this is now in the park, and since we were able to get Zuvva Galleries to reduce the price, we were surprised that we were able to raise the money as quickly as we did. So, but we are short $6,500, and this is a classic example of what the public art present for, public art is all about. It's coming to that fund if we really need it, and we do. But we did have contributions recently, including a contribution from former Mayor Wally and Sheila Nichol, and the Community Hills Foundation, Fountain Hills Foundation, excuse me, the George and Patty Olps, and Beverly Belleri and John Hershey, and Robert Ditter. And we've raised $8,500 toward the original purchase price of $25,000. So we're $6,500 short of our goal, and the use of the 1% for art fund will mean that this work will stay in our community for the pleasure of all of our residents and visitors. And thank you for your consideration and support of our efforts to build the finest public art collection in the state of Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy Thompson. Thank you, Mayor Miles, for coming in as well. And I think the picture you were showing there shows it nicely there at the fountain park near the performance pad. So it looks great there. It's a very nice piece, and it's very generous for the artists to negotiate down, so that we can take ownership of this piece, and I appreciate it. We've got a motion and a second. Anyone else from the public, Beth?
No, Mayor.
All right, any questions from council?
It doesn't appear so, Mayor.
Excellent. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Mayor 70?
Thank you. Item five, discussion with possible direction of staff and commercial A-frame and banner sign regulations. Gene, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. This discussion tonight concerns two usages of signs in our town that are set to expire on December 31st. In particular, speaking of A-frame signs for commercial uses at churches, and banner signs intended for special sales events. As you know, one of the town council goals is to further economic development, business vitality, and relationships between the town and businesses to benefit our community. One objective for 2008 was to review our signage regulations and amend those regulations to support business vitality or visibility. That objective was met when the town council approved major amendments to the sign ordinance on November 20th of last year. As part of those amendments, commercial A-frames, including usages at churches, was reinstated, but given an expiration date of December 31st. This is specified in Section 6.08.B.13 of the Town of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance. Likewise, banners for special sales events were included, but also with an expiration date of December 31st. This is specified in Section 6.08.D.3 of the Town of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance. These dates were included as a mechanism to allow for review of the impacts of these usages and compliance by the businesses. To assist the town council in that review, staff conducted two major activities to provide information. One, staff announced and held an open house for A-frame signs on October 19th. The open house was advertised through the Fountain Hills Times, the town website, and on Channel 11. Surveys were created and provided to the attendees of the open house. Two, staff conducted three drive-arounds to attempt to quantify business compliance. This is a survey provided to business owners, and this is the one that provides to residents. You have that in your package. Despite multiple methods of communication in the open house, the turnout was sparsely attended by both business owners and residents. The business owners attending all support the continued use of A-frames, and a few had a few suggestions for some improvements. The residents attending were split, with supporters suggesting a need for more attractive signs. In addition to the open house, drive-arounds were conducted on September 10th, the 19th, and October 15th. The last two drive-around dates were conducted prior to 7:00 a.m., the earliest time that A-frame signs are allowed per the ordinance. Consistently, about two-thirds of the signs counted had one or more violations. Major violations were really, one, that signs were left out after the hours allowed for display, and, two, signs placed in the town right-of-way. Finally, you also have an email in your packet from a resident and former director of tourism from a community in Michigan. Here are the elements of the A-frame sign regulations. Again, the sections most violated are the element 3, which is, shall not be located in public right-of-way, and then the element number 10, which has to do with display hours. Now, regarding banners for special sales events, those require advance notification to the town. I have no record of any such request, so it's fair to say that they're used very infrequently. So what are the council's options? The council could do nothing, which would result in A-frame signs and banners for special sales events not being allowed after December 31st of this year. The council could direct staff to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment to extend the expiration date, and for both types, signs or one, for one, two, or even three years out. Or the council could staff, could direct staff to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment to remove the expiration date altogether. If the council wants to continue the usage of one or both of these sign types, then time is of the essence. Norification needs appear in next week's Fountain Hills Times. Planning zoning would need to review and make the recommendations at their planned November 30th meeting. And the town council would need to approve the amendments on December 17th. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gene. Thank you very much. Anyone from the public on this, Beth?
No, Mayor.
All right. Council, questions for staff?
We're thinking.
Thank you. I'll comment and get the juices flowing here. I've obviously had some, I'm sure, like we all have, had comments directly. People may not have attended many of these public meetings. I appreciate the staff for putting those together and reaching out and asking for input. This obviously came before us initially in '08 as an effort for the Town of Fountain Hills to show its commitment to being business-friendly. And through a collaborative process, starting with the BVAC, I believe, and Chamber of Commerce, they worked on it directly and forwarded to us, something that we ended up adopting, for the most part. And so we are working with a solution that businesses, we feel, wanted, but it's not been perfect, of course. So that's why we have it here before us again. We have an option just to let it expire, and therefore, making A-frames not usable any longer, or we can consider the other options that Gene had mentioned. But I- But I've had people comment that they'd like the A-frames to go away. I've had businesses tell me very directly that they make a big difference in the traffic that they see in their stores. So we've got input on both sides. I think obviously in the middle is where we're going to find our happiness. And currently, from what I've seen and what I've heard, is there are certainly some businesses that are utilizing less than professional appearing signage, and maybe even multiple signs on the lot. It seems like most businesses have been following, utilizing the signs only on their property, not businesses from streets that are off the main street bringing signs to the main street. I haven't seen as much of that. But also, it continues to be placed in the town right-of-way. I'm just not sure if the public is really aware of what the town right-of-way might be, and Gene, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, the town right-of-way is anywhere, you know, within three feet of the sidewalk, but certainly would be the medians and the areas adjacent to any public road. Is that generally right, Gene?
Most of the major streets have right-aways that are in the area of eight to fourteen feet from the pavement.
Okay, so quite a pretty significant distance. But certainly, the medians are public right-of-way. Is that correct, Gene?
Yes.
All right. So you see a lot of the medians, and that's obviously not the place to place them. And I think that may be more of just awareness by the public, and I know staff's done as much as they can to try to let folks know. Certainly, the hours aren't good this time of year. Having them out later doesn't make much difference because they're much impacted business because it's getting dark, so they're not really visible. So it doesn't make much sense to have them out late. But generally, I'd love businesses to kind of step up here and police themselves. There's obviously not that many that are causing citizens in our community to have some problems with the A-frames. Most of the A-frames seem to be professional and follow the guidelines. But it'd be great to have some of these other businesses be more aware, because we'd rather not spend staff time and money policing this type of effort. And of course, our number-one desire is to help businesses be as successful as possible. And part of that is to ensure that our town looks great and adds value to businesses as well as our residents here. All right, do they get anybody's thoughts, or Miles watering with comments or questions?
Mayor, at the joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think it seemed like people were leaning towards letting this at least go for another year. Commissioner Yates had some good suggestions as far as concentrating on enforcement, and the businesses that are in compliance, maybe engage them in helping to educate the business owners that are either leaving their signs out or putting them where they are not supposed to be. So he put the emphasis on the coming year to have more education, and like you said, businesses helping businesses to comply.
Good. Appreciate that.
And Councilman Archibald, his juices are flowing now.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Gene, did we have any, I was reading the comments the other day that we got as people filled out the form, and it was pretty apparent that there's more education that needs to go on pertaining to the A-frame signs. And I think the Vice Mayor is correct in that we just need to be a little more proactive. I don't know how proactive we have been. Certainly, nobody likes their signs taken down. They take that as a threat. But certainly, if we can maybe go into the store and maybe talk to that particular merchant and explain to them what the signs are for, they're not directional signs. We were pretty clear in that. I think when we passed that stat, the amendment to the statute, that these were for advertising signs, like, you know, you always think of a sandwich shop, and they maybe put a little bit of a menu out there on and try to entice people to come in, or they have a special going on. I think of Gridley's when I think of special. She always seems to be having some kind of specials going on. But have you heard, have you heard anything about the banners? I didn't see anything in here on banners.
Mayor, Councilmember Archibald, no, I haven't had any feedback at all on that. And again, we haven't had any official requests for those types of banners, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I would be currently in favor of at least trying it for another year and see if we could be a little more proactive on it. I don't want to just cut it off, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater. I'd like to give it a shot. I understand merchants' concerns. What I don't want to do is bring back a proliferation of A-frame signs that we had in the past that we had to deal with. Those were one of the toughest things that we had to deal with at that time. And I'd like to just, but I understand where businesses come from, and I'd like to try to help them if I can. Thank you.
And thank you.
Yes, Mayor, we have Councilman Legay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I would concur with the Vice Mayor and Councilman Archibald. I'd like to see us extend this for another year, particularly with the downturn in the economy. What I find interesting is that, as Gene put up not too long ago, and council, we just looked at this, that blue slide, the A-frame sign ordinance, I mean, when you look at that, it's really not that complex. And delivering this sheet to each business person, I would hope would be enough to have people comply. Vice Mayor had mentioned, Commissioner Yates had made some comments during the joint session. He also had an interesting comment and an idea, too. He talked about the fact that maybe we should require folks to have a permit to have an A-frame, and maybe not necessarily charge them. Or if we did charge them, maybe it would be a really small fee. And the purpose of that would be for the business owner to have a face-to-face with staff so that they could kind of learn the rules of the ordinance, which would then help prevent us from a lot of labor costs with respect to compliance. Now, I'm not sure who's observing what, but my observation, since we've put this in place, that I'd say fifty percent of the signs out there are in violation. They're in medians, they're using, I mean, you could go down this whole list here. They're the wrong size, they're unprofessional, so forth and so on, and we've been extremely lax just letting this thing unfold, doing the best we can to help businesses. Regarding the notion of a permit or some type of regulation, I think that's the only way you're going to be able to get the type of education you need out there. One last comment in that regard. What I found very interesting, if council had an opportunity to read the surveys that were in our packet, although there were just a few of them, the business folks themselves were saying they want the folks that are violating brought into compliance, obviously, because they don't want to lose their privilege. And it's the business folks themselves that are suggesting a permitting process. And a few of the residents, although a handful of them were very much opposed to it, some of those kind of straddled the fence, and they also suggested the same thing. We need a way of kind of regulating this. And I don't think it's too much to ask folks to get a permit, now whether we charge zero, ten, whatever. Even if we charge zero dollars, we're going to say, well, it's labor for staff. We're going to save a lot less labor having someone come to Town Hall than folks having a ride around. And I'd say fifty percent of the signs out there are, in fact, in violation. One last comment, and this was actually from one of the surveys, and I think it's an excellent comment, and it's a recommendation I'd like to make. Someone stated that the word, one of these bullet points says for promotional purposes only, and someone commented, what does that mean? And I really think it would be helpful if we enhance the definition of promotional, because as Council Archibald had mentioned, a lot of the signs out there are, in fact, directional. So in summary, good work done by the chamber, the subcommittees, great work done by P and Z. We want to help the businesses out. There are some violations out there, but they can be remediated very simply, and as has been stated. It's an educational process. How do we do that education? I know when we put this forward, your group did do education. And in some cases, it may have, you know, fallen on deaf ears. So I don't want to belay this scenario, but I think we need some type of mechanism for making that happen, and I'll just put that out for consideration. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Legay. You're right, there's some very good comments that the business owners and the public provided. If we look through those, you know, you mentioned a couple. Obviously, there's a couple that want them gone altogether. There's some that point out that signs that say now open, it's a business that's been open for over a year. We do need to ask our business owners to kind of clean that up. It's not really effective when it's not necessarily relevant or accurate. I'd like to just keep us focused that here we're going to, Gene, are we looking to simply have an extension of this, or what would be the process if we were to tweak the regulations further?
But you still have to initiate an amendment to the ordinance. If we do some tweaking, and maybe this is a question for Andrew, because of Proposition two, we have to be clear on those types of changes and restrictions.
Andrew?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think that the primary focus of having the deadline, the hard deadline in there in the first place, was to avoid any, albeit likely to be remote chance, but any chance at all that we'd have a two-to-seven claim on this. Tweaking of any of the provisions in here, again, probably very, very remote. Anybody would challenge a tweak to take promotional, to say promotional, not directional, you know, if that's the kind of tweaking we're talking about. And then just extending the date out another year, I can't imagine we're going to have a problem with that.
Mayor, Councilman Cantino would like to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Mayor. I think that what we've done is great. It's helped a lot of the businesses out that could not put their signs out. And I think that we've got to go back to when we had all the real estate signs out, and code enforcement was enforcing those things like crazy. We've got to go back, and we've got to nip the people that are keeping their signs out twenty-four, seven, and that aren't in compliance, and that should be code enforcement. I know that they're starting to do that, but I think that we've got to get them back out to do it, because we that don't do it and take our sign, or that do do it, take our signs out in the morning, put our signs in when the sun goes down, that's what it's all about. And if all these people aren't doing it right, and they're getting away with it, and their signs are out of what the dimensions are, then I think it's not our problem as much as it is code enforcement. And if we could crack down on that, then I think everybody will start to come in compliance with everything. So we have to look at our own house of what we're doing. And I know they were really radical about realtor signs for a long time. Now, I think we're out, we've done it, but we have proven that it is successful, but we have so many of them that I see along Saguaro that leave them there twenty-four, seven, and don't even hardly care. And some of them, like I saw some realtors, have open house. Well, that's their office. How much open house do they have in their office? I think that's what we have to take a look at.
That's a good point and good comment, Councilmember Cantino, as well as Councilman Legay. You've mentioned the businesses themselves, and their feedback to us have been asking us to, as Councilmember Cantino, a business owner, said himself, is we need to police those that are not following the ordinance and making, in essence, our entryway along Saguaro and other streets not look quite as nice. So we maybe need to reach out to the chamber. Some of the comments in the packet mentioned the chamber helping us out a little bit more, businesses, policing the businesses, as we talked about. Maybe not, maybe just some modest tweaks to the language and the ordinance itself to be clear. But as far as policing, obviously, we'd like to limit how much town resources go into policing it, and then would ask businesses and others to get involved. But to be sensitive to Councilmember Cantino, it is true, every week or two that goes by here, there seems to be another sign that's not, that's kind of pushing the limit. You know, banners flying between trees of late stand out, so there's, it's not getting better. So we need to take some action in order to help ourselves and help the businesses that want to follow the ordinances and not reward those that are not. So I'm not sure where to take that, Gene, or if you've got ideas on who to work with to help our business owners, and also to perhaps look at some more additional enforcement actions to ensure that this doesn't get worse.
Mayor, if I may, we have a couple more council people that would like to speak, starting with Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor. The A-frames have been a real controversial subject for eight years, anyway, and the business owners need to look at this as a gift and treat it as such, because two years ago, the A-frames were outlawed, and the business people in the chamber came to us and said, hey, you know, give us a break. So we have, in fact, given the business owners a break, and they continually put it back in our face by not picking their signs up and putting them, by not picking them up at the right hour of the evening. And when they set them out, they're setting them out on the public right-of-way or in the middle of the sidewalk. And I don't think it's out of line for us to explain to the business people that it's a gift that we're giving them, and we can take that gift away, just like we did several years ago, for the exact same problems that we're having today. Now, I believe that asking the business people to come in and actually have their sign permitted, and I have to say, I believe possibly free would be the answer. But in the process of picking the permit up, they need to read and sign that they've read the entire ordinance on A-frame signs. Maybe some of the business owners don't understand it. It would surprise me, but maybe they don't. So I would have to say, let's bring the business people in with their signs. Let's look at the signs. Let's make sure it meets all the requirements, professionally made, not hand-done, a nice-looking sign. Let's educate the people and give them a break. I, for one more year, feel that mainly because of the economic situation that everybody is in, we could extend this one more year without any problems. But I would also like to think that the business people, if we give them one more year, they would police themselves and straighten up and abide by the ordinance.
Mayor, Councilman Dickey.
Thank you. I had a question about if we extend it, can we do that with the direction to staff that's not in a motion to investigate permitting and maybe even charging a slight modest fee? I've had two business people suggest that, that a fee might help compliance.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I think that there is at least a reference that would be necessary in this section to a permit if that requirement's going to be included. So we'd like to have some direction on that in your motion tonight. We would also then, I believe we had a companion to it when we did the permitting on A-frame signs before, so it might have another ordinance that comes along with it. But it's really, it's nuts and bolts. If we get direction from you that you want to do the licensing scheme, we've been there before. We already have had a time where we had permits stuck on the back of the sign, so, you know, it's not difficult to implement if we get that direction.
Mayor, how would you see that wording?
Just whatever motion we have to initiate the zoning ordinance amendment, and that's what it needs to be, is initiating an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for continuation of A-frame signs for another year, minor tweaks for business license, and to clarify promotional purposes is all I've heard so far. Wally?
Thanks. Here's just a couple of comments. You know, as we heard our budget, our fiscal update from our deputy town manager, Geddy, we are going to have fewer and fewer town resources to police things, and that would probably include also, you know, the inability to add folks or add people to, you know, carry out permitting activities at a desk. And I'm not sure what the workload would be from this, but from the number of signs out there, that's quite a bit. Obviously, they wouldn't have to come in very often, as the signs, you know, would last quite a while. So just caution us on actually having a permitting process. I like the idea, I just don't know if this is the time to do it either. It seems like it's, the A-frames are not terribly out of control, but they're starting to move in that direction, as we probably haven't been real diligent with enforcement, because we want to do all we can to help businesses succeed. But we're really going to have to ask businesses to help us with this issue directly themselves is what I think is going to be a reality of the fiscal environment we're living within here today, if this benefit is going to remain in our ordinance.
Mayor, we have some additional comment. Councilman Arsham Bol.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think at this time, I'll just go ahead and make a motion that we initiate a zoning ordinance amendment for a one-year extension, that we include in that amendment a clearer definition of promotional, and that we include a permitting process, or that we initiate a permitting process for the signs.
Is that clear enough? They've got a first and a second. Is that clear enough, Andrew?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that we'd like a little more clarification is, is it a free permit, or is there expected to be a nominal fee?
Pick a nominal fee. I think we should at least cover staff, a little bit of staff's time. Nominal fee's not out of line.
Andrew, may I have a... Should they include the fact that, because we're talking about two different types of signs, should that be in the motion as well? They're talking about A-frames and banners for special sales events, because both of them are expiring.
I'd assume that we were including everything in it so that we wouldn't cut one piece off and the other, but if that assumption's incorrect, then let's know.
Well, the balloons in that already include, they have to notify the town. It's not a permitting process, but they have to notify the town.
But banners for special sales events will not be allowed after December 31st, just like A-frames.
That motion was inclusive. I was making that motion to be inclusive of the banners.
And my second, the double extension. And I would second everything as he said.
And Councilman Laje.
Including the fee.
Do we have additional comment, Councilman Laje?
Just a point of clarity. The permit would be for the A-frame, but not for the banner. Okay. And just another point regarding fee, no fee, because it sounds like that's kind of where we may have some disagreement here. What I'd like to suggest is that for the first year, we don't charge a fee. And just get these folks in because charging, not charging a fee would probably be less labor-intensive. And then, you know, we have the option at the end of the year to review this, and if we find out that it is extremely labor-intensive, then at that point, I would assess it and then say, okay, year two, beginning perhaps, then we would assess a fee. We'd have a better sense for, you know, should that be a nickel, should it be $25, so forth and so on. But so...
Appreciate.
Our motion assesses to clarify what, fee or no fee, so...
The motion was for a nominal fee.
A nominal fee.
And let staff come up with...
Which could be $5. I mean, it could be like a dog license. It wouldn't be much. Councilman Brown, you had to comment?
And I concur with Councilman Laje that we should not, and I like the idea of not charging the first year to see how it goes. And I agree, it could be labor-intensive, and it would give us a chance to look at it. But if council agrees, I would say that we should not charge a fee for the permit the first year.
Is that a motion?
Any other comments on there? I think we've... So do we need to amend that motion then, Andrew?
Mayor, I just want to point out that, and I understand what everybody's saying, but we just had a presentation on our budget here, and I don't know if you noticed, but trends are starting to go for fee-for-use. And we've also had a discussion about, like some people have said, 50% of these seem to be out of compliance. We aren't able to go and have code enforcement going around for these. So I would say that even if it is small, if it's $5, $10, or $25, that that, if we can get something coming in that will at least assist us and assist not only in looking for the people that are violating, but in the education process and the time it takes to do these permits. I don't think it's that much, but I think it's enough to assist the town in its duties. What you're saying about the economy is affecting the town also, as we just learned from Julie. So I wish that we would continue to look at a small fee.
Councilman Cantino?
Yes, I thank you, Vice Mayor. I think that we are overlooking something, but the people like my wife's company, a very small company, that just struggles to make ends meet half the time, were tacking and tacking and tacking. How many people sitting at this dais have businesses that could use A-frames? Nobody. And I think that what we're doing is we're making judgments without realizing, if we keep on tacking money and doing things, this is why we have a code enforcement. They're out there to do one thing, and that's to stress the regulations of the codes. We hired them for that reason. I agree that we could have a permit, but not tack a money all the time. Just don't keep saying dollars, dollars, dollars to businesses because we're gonna have half the businesses this next year go out anyways. So you're just pushing them out the door. Yes, you are.
Councilmember Cantino, appreciate your passion on item. I think what I heard was nominal fee. I don't know if that was a $5 or $10. That certainly, in my opinion, not pushing them out the door. It's trying to cover some of the expense and actually the permitting process, as I mentioned, it would take more man-hours. You mentioned the fact that we could utilize the code enforcement that we have out there. That's more of a reaction of the town to address something that's out of compliance. It seems to be the effort of the council here tonight, talking about the permitting process. Seems like most people are in favor, including Councilmember Cantino. It's just about a fee. The permitting process would be looking to have more of an educational opportunity at the front end to make sure they understand what the ordinance is, maybe look at their sign. I don't know if this includes putting a little sticker on there that says they got a permit. But I don't think the nominal fee, one time every year of $5 or $10, whatever it might be, would be business unfriendly or pushing them out the door. But we certainly don't want to cause harm to businesses at this time when they're most vulnerable. We just want to have a way to be responsible for managing costs and having a great town here. So I think the question, if I could, the permitting issue, what I'm most concerned about is the fact that that adds more enforcement potentially to the issue. Do we need to then go check all these signs that are out there to make sure they've got a permit, rather than just look at the signs that are obviously not in compliance with current ordinance? That's what I just want to caution us on. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Councilman Brown, please.
I could support a $5 permit fee. I couldn't support any more than that. But the other item that we need to be talking about would be a timeline as to when they need to have the signs permitted. And I would say that if we're going to, if we are going to go through the permitting process, that by the end of January of 2010, the signs have got to be permitted.
Councilwoman Dickey? I just wanted to respond a little bit. I understand what you're saying, Councilman Cantino, but again, I don't think it would be that much money that we're talking about, the way the mayor was speaking. And I'm afraid that as we move forward with what we were seeing, our budget for this town, I'm afraid that some of the things that we do, we're not going to be able to do even at the level that we are now. So I can kind of foresee that we won't have the opportunity to maybe be as proactive on these things. And I also feel that the residents and the people who expressed the idea that they don't even want any of these signs, and again, as Councilman Brown was saying, this has been going on for a long time, and it's not an easy decision to even allow them to continue. So I want to also bring those folks in to the discussion who don't want them at all. And at least this way, we might be showing some control of what they will look like, and also, they won't be taking tax money away from other functions that the town could do in order to continue to enforce this extension that we're giving, which I, again, I mean, I think some people don't want them at all. So that's why I do think it's a good compromise this way.
Mayor, one thing that hasn't been addressed, though, if there is a permitting process and a business owner does continue to violate the code, has his sign out all night, or is in the public right-of-way, what would the penalty be? What would be the step taken, as long as they have a permit, but they were violating the terms of the permit?
Yeah, good question. Gene, is that addressed? Are there punitive, are there fines or fees, or just do you collect the sign? How does it work today?
I guess today, basically, the signs get confiscated.
Would there be a benefit of just saying if this happened numerous times, that they would lose their permit? In which case, they would lose the ability to have a sign. I mean, that's a little bit stronger because once you lose your permit, it's no sign.
That seems to make a lot of sense. All right. So there's been some good dialogue. Andrew, do these items potentially need to be added to an amendment to the initial motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think the initial motion, as restated, is covering everything because it includes the nominal fee, it includes the clarification language. The implementation will already be no earlier than the 17th of January, anyway, based upon the 30-day waiting period after an ordinance is adopted. And I believe the 17th of December is when this would be adopted. So January's about the time the permitting process would come into being. And Councilmember Cantino's waving at me at the moment.
Oh, yes, I was just curious. When you talk about A-frames, are you talking about all the realtors, too, paying their permit fees?
No.
The realtors have their signs out in front of their businesses now.
Gene, would you please explain what the, how it's delineated here?
Yeah, Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Dennis Cantino. The A-frames that we're talking about here are strictly the ones used for commercial purposes and churches. A-frames are like, that are used for like garage sales or real estate signs are not covered under this part of the ordinance.
Okay, but real estate signs are sitting out 24/7 now, out in front of their businesses. How would they differ on that?
Councilmember Cantino, they do not. They should not be out 24 hours either.
We got a double standard.
Is it true, Gene, though, that that is covered in a different part of the code and could be enforced in a different area of the code as well?
Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Hanson, yes, that's true.
Councilman Laje, did you want to add something?
As you asked, $5, I could live with that, basically, as a nominal fee, which I think was part of the motion. But I would like to address this notion of code enforcement. There probably are more code violations in this town currently than we can currently enforce. As a matter of fact, we could probably add code enforcement, but as our revenue stream goes down, we're probably maybe looking at, God forbid, decrease in code enforcement. So we need to start finding new methodologies of managing the less serious scenarios. And as I recall, part of the reason why A-frames went away is because they were such a pain, and they required so much code enforcement. I think that lent fuel to the fire to totally get rid of them. So we're looking at this for a year. I think if the permitting scenario creates the education, that's what I'm into it for. Once again, I think permitting allows an opportunity for face-to-face, to create that education, so that everyone can be successful minimizing the need for code enforcement to go out there, because in the future, they're just not going to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Laje. All right, so we've got a motion, we've had dialogue around an amendment, or as stated, Andrew, you feel we have enough for staff to move forward on a motion to, if we vote on it in affirmative, to bring it back to us for consideration?
Mayor, if I can just interrupt for a minute, Andrew. One thing that was brought up that hasn't been, I don't think, decided on was in the permitting process. I think it was mentioned to have to bring it in, have it reviewed. I don't know that we want to have people have to bring in their actual sign. Maybe they just need to bring in a diagram or a...
Picture.
A picture or something that would be attached to their application.
That makes sense.
And the process we used before was, it was just a sticker that they placed on the sign to make it easy for code enforcement to look quickly and see if they had a sticker on, so they didn't have to check each sign each time.
Okay, there are no more hands, Mayor.
All right, so Andrew, we've got enough of a motion for us to move forward if we vote in the affirmative?
Yes, sir, we do.
All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed?
Mayor Seven.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Gene, and I think your illustrations on signs in the packet, that's available online for business owners to look at, showing some signs that might seem to be in alignment with the ordinance, but actually are not. Are good examples illustrated in that packet, so people should take a look at that. And again, we'll look for us to work with the chamber and to ensure that people are aware of what the ordinances are and what they're going to become.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Gene. Next item is item number six, consideration of ordinance 09-14, amending the Fountain Hills Town Code, Chapter 2, Mayor and Council, Article 2-1, Council relating to vacancies in council. Beth?
Mayor, council, at the October 13th work-study session, the council indicated they had an interest in having the town code amendment brought forward for their consideration that would add the flexibility for an election option to be added to the appointment option currently provided for in the town code. Council members also discussed adding the option of filling a mayor vacancy by appointment from among the remaining seated council. Ordinance 09-14 was drafted to give the council the flexibility currently available under state statute. It also provides the council with the ability to fill the mayor vacancy by appointment from existing council members, with the council vacancy then filled using one of the methods established in state statute. The period of time to fill the vacancy was addressed with the term reasonable, as each vacancy would present different situations that would need to be taken into account when a vacancy occurred. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So you look here for a motion here first, looking for a motion to approve ordinance 09-14?
So move second.
All right. Anyone from the public on this, Beth?
No, Mayor.
All right. Questions for Beth, council? Comments?
There's a pause, there's a...
Yeah. Good job, Beth, by the way. Thank you very much.
There are no questions, Mayor.
Yes, there will be. Wait three seconds, here they come. Oopsie.
Oh, Mayor. Oh, Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Laje.
Sorry to disappoint you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions.
I knew you would. I knew we, there'll be dialogue.
I'm personally, and people I've chatted with, I'm comfortable with Provision A, that the council shall fill any vacancy that may occur, and the council by the method provided by the state statute, which we talked about, which gave us the two options of appointing and/or going to the next election. I'm very comfortable with that. I get a little twisted around this mayor, this mayor assignment in terms of the way that it's articulated here, and I'm just wondering if anyone else has an issue with that. In the case of a vacancy that may occur in the office of mayor, the council shall appoint from the remaining council members one person to serve as mayor for the remainder of the mayor's term. The council should then fill the alternate position. I'm just wondering if there needs to be some type of timeline on that. In other words, if the mayor's term was only six months, would we want to fill it? I'm not sure. Should we have something in there for the mayor like we did for the council, for the next election? And I say that because I know this group is contemplating a future possible ordinance to include a four-year mayor term. So if we have an ordinance here now that basically says for the remainder of their term, that could possibly be three and a half years, and you could have elections in between there. So I'm comfortable with portion A. B, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I think it's just a little too open-ended and perhaps needs to be tightened up. So I just put that out for thought, consideration, and discussion.
Mayor, just to speak to that, going to the four-year would be a time-consuming matter. I think I would be comfortable with going ahead with this while the term is two years, since the four-year change would even require an election. So I mean, we're talking about significant time. If it did go to a four-year, it would be easy enough to amend this, to modify it, to adjust it for the four-year term.
Vice Mayor, I just wanted to simply point that out, that that was a possibility, and then that would be, it's just a little too long out there.
And Mr. Mayor, coming away from the last meeting, it was pretty clear that the direction from council was keep it simple. And the simplest thing we could think of is while we have a two-year mayor term, appointing for the remainder of the term was never going to be more than two years to the next election. So we kept it that way, understanding that we may have to address this later. So, we kept it that way, understanding that we may have to address this later.
And we just take good care of our mayor, and then nothing will happen.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable if we spent less time talking about the mayor not being around.
You better stay off that Golden Gate Bridge, Jay.
I will.
Vice Mayor, Council, please. And Mayor, yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I just wanted to mention that and get it in the record if we have future discussion, that we would need to go back and take a look at this, and I agree with keeping it possible. Andrew, help me understand this particular scenario. Let's say that there's only six months left on a term. I mean, the way this reads, we would be appointing someone for perhaps a mayor's term for six months. That would mean a council person would step off, and maybe they have two more years, three more years left on their term. That would be quite unusual. That was the second comment I had down here that I didn't address. I mean, if it's only a six-month term, I would suggest that the vice mayor foregoes that responsibility as the mayor for six months.
Well, maybe it could be eight months, because that's how long a vice mayor is a vice mayor.
Yeah, whatever the timeframe is, but I'm just simply thinking that if there's only, if there's a year left on a term, that makes sense. You know, if there's six months left on a term, that doesn't make sense. I haven't worked out what that timeline would be, but it just doesn't seem logical. If there's six months left on a term, look at what we're doing. We're taking and putting a mayor in for six months, then we're going through the whole process to bring a new councilperson on board, or whatever the timeframe may be. So, I think there needs, I want to keep it simple, but I think that that can create an issue for us.
Thanks, Councilmember LaJ. I do think it's important to have a mayor.
You do?
And I think, you know, there's plenty of talent and ability in the councils that I've been around and the town's had for its 20 years to have someone fill that vacancy until the election. So, I would rather have someone fill it, should it need to be filled.
If that time was that short, maybe the option would be just not to fill the vacant council.
That was what I was recommending.
Sure should be.
We have that option, don't we?
That's why the reasonable timeframe.
Yes, I think the way it's written gives flexibility to do that.
I guess that's why Andrew was laughing.
Yes. All right. Any other discussion, or can we?
Mayor?
Move to a vote on this? Yes, Councilmember Dickey?
Do we have a motion already on the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
I think everybody's ready to vote.
All right. No one from the public, right, Beth? I already asked that.
Yes, sir, no one from the public.
All right, yes, the hordes of folks coming forward. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, hold on. Beth?
Councilmember Contino asked for a roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ashambo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Contino?
Aye.
Councilmember LaJ?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Beth. Good job in going through that and uncovering what other communities are doing, and it seems like we came up for a good solution for our town. And the next item, seven, council discussion direction to town manager. I don't see any there tonight. Item eight, summary of council request, report on recent activities by town manager. Rick, anything?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Yes?
Did we not give you a direction to look into that citizen who came up here and had an issue with her trailer?
With the what, I'm sorry?
With the trailer? To look into?
Yeah, Ms. Evans up on Palisades, I believe.
Yeah, we'll look into it. Okay, thank you.
I'll report next time on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Got it.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or adjourn. Thank you very much.